Good morning and welcome to the second monthly meeting of the Greenwich Board of Selectmen. Please rise and join in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is a regular meeting of the board. It is a public meeting, not a public hearing, although the chair reserves the right to call upon any interested attendee to pose a question or make a comment on any item that's before the board today. There are copies of the meeting's agenda on the table as you come in along with a set of materials that we'll be considering today. There is essentially, under new business, one item that is of substance, and that is a request for municipal improvement for a new marina restroom at Greenwich Point. We have established a practice of hearing the item at one meeting and then voting on it at the next to allow for commentary and feedback to be digested. So when we get to that, certainly we'll opine further. Item number two is approval of the minutes from the meeting that took place on June 9th. At this time, would entertain any corrections to those minutes, changes? Systematically, they've got the signs up. When I come through there, it was open today, but they've got all of the closure signs in place when they begin to work. So is there a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item number three is first selectman updates. For those who perhaps are new to the Board of Selectmen meeting, explaining what this is about is by charter, the board is required to meet once a month. It stipulates that the first selectman should update the board on any salient matters. So this is an opportunity to do that and also to highlight many of the activities that have taken place in town during the intervening period between meetings. The first item I'd like to present today is a recognition, and it's a recognition for a gentleman who has served this town most ably for 12 years. As we all know, Greenwich is heavily dependent upon our citizen volunteers to manage many of the affairs of the town, all as volunteers. Today, I want to acknowledge the contributions that Mr. John Chadwick has made through his service on the retirement board for the town of Greenwich. As we know, we have a defined benefit pension fund that has been in effect since the 40s, and that fund certainly provides benefit to those who are retired and still some within the workforce to be retiring, although we have transitioned all new hires with the exception of police and fire to define contribution plans. But today, I want to acknowledge John's service, and I'm going to read the following proclamation. Whereas John Chadwick joined the retirement board on April 8th, 2005, John was appointed because of his extensive experience in the investment community, and these credentials would provide an unmeasurable value to the town of Greenwich and the retirement system fund. Whereas John's mission is to bring the best return of investment to the retirement system fund by ensuring the asset classes selected by the retirement board achieve the desired performance. Whereas to carry out that mission, John has dedicated his time and expertise to review investments and investment strategies, including but not limited to commingled funds, mutual funds, private equity, and private debt. Whereas John's work has been achieved by growing the retirement system fund by more than $100 million with an annual rate of return of 9.3% during the past five years. Whereas this year marks John's 12th year on the retirement board and the eighth year as the chairman of the board of the retirement system. Whereas John will mark this occasion with the celebration which was held yesterday, June 28th, 2017. Now therefore, I, Peter J. Tessie, First Selectman of the town of Greenwich, in recognition of this significant milestone that Mr. John Chadwick has attained in his contributions to the retirement board and their retirement system fund, proclaim June 28th, 2017 as John Chadwick Day in the town. So John, I again want to affirm publicly your contribution, express collectively our gratitude, and wish you well in your future endeavors, but today, we're here just to acknowledge and celebrate your over decade, 12 years of service, so thank you.
Thank you, John.
Okay, I appreciate it. As I told Ben and John, this is the longest job I've ever held. Thank you very much for the opportunity, and I wish the new managers all the best in the world.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And John provided me a wonderful synopsis of his 12 years, when he joined the board, how he went about researching and studying the portfolio composition and looking at the underperforming managers in their benchmarks, broadening the portfolio, which took a lot of time and care. And the other thing that it involves, which perhaps many people don't understand from an investment point of view, unlike individuals in perhaps foundations or corporate entities, the town has a very circuitous approval process to make these decisions. And while it may begin with the retirement board, it does traverse over into legal to review these very extensive instruments. And these are instruments that our capable legal staff are often, we're often not familiar with. So it required patience and subsequently a decision to bring in an outside attorney to deal with these type of instruments, which John was instrumental in doing. So that was a very significant undertaking of getting a timely approval of those instruments.
Challenging times, too.
Exactly, and I think that's the other element, that John presided in probably one of the most challenging economic markets since the Great Depression. And for that, you know, as you cite here, the best year for the retirement fund was 2014, when the return was 17.3%. Final numbers are not yet in, but fiscal 2017 will ideally be at the same increase. So we went from the bottom of the barrel, 1%, to now the top for similar funds. So I think, again, hats off to you, your colleagues, but your leadership and knowledge and expertise, really tremendously valued.
Thank you, Peter. Just let me leave you with two words of investment advice. One is, there's no use running if you're on the wrong road. And the other is, even if that's glum, there's always another trolley.
Well, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So yesterday, the board met, and Mr. Chadwick's term ends on June 30th. I was stepping down as of June 30th, so he stepped down as chairman, and election was held amongst the five. Mr. Chadwick still seated through the 30th, and Joe Pellegrino was elected the chairman. The board did also vote to adopt a practice of having the chairmanship served for just one year and it come up for renewal. So that was something that was proposed by...
Who elects the chair? You guys are the...
The board does. The vacancy for the board is filled through a prescribed process in the charter whereby the RTM moderator, the chairman of the BET, and the first selectman interview and make appointment of one of the two citizen members. So we will be in the process of looking for someone. There's always people coming forward, but a very important position, as you look at this plan and see that over time, over the long term, perhaps long after we're gone, not only from office but from this, or it will primarily be a fund supportive of public safety, because they still remain in it, whereas non-public safety, since roughly 2009, no more have gone into it. So look forward to that. Moving right along, just quickly, some updates. On June 13th, the Greenwich Alliance for Education celebrated its music education initiative, tuning in to music recital. Students from the 4th through 12th grades received free instrumental music lessons through that program. Did you attend it?
No, I didn't.
Also, the 13th, I had the pleasure of hosting a North Street School family, Min Kim and her husband Preston and their son and all pair, who had bid on an auction item that I donated to have lunch with the first selectman. In addition to giving them a brief tour of Town Hall, they were also given tours of a Greenwich Police Patrol car, which was staffed by Officer Alan Pesch, and the Greenwich Fire Department Engine Company, staffed by Steve Lanzarone, Terry Murphy, and Mike Ulrich. I want to thank those four, because what they were able to do is really provide a very mini education on fire and safety. And I often thought, you know, this is the type of experience that, in the moment, it just seems like a fun thing, but somewhere, at some time, one of these kids or adults are going to remember what they were told that day and perhaps save a life. So I thought it was a very constructive way of expressing to them what our town government does in the area of life safety. The PTA Council held its annual dinner at the Millbrook Club on June 14th. They recognized Mike Trugney for his service as the president, as well as all the outgoing officers. On the 14th, I was at Glenville School for Flag Day. Following that, I hosted 20 3rd grade students from the Japanese school. Their visit included tours of the selectmen's office, as well as the town clerk's office and records vault, and the health department lab, where apparently bugs being treated were the big hit. Or tested, not treated. Were treated for what the bugs do, we test the bugs. Ticks particularly. On the evening of June 14th, all three selectmen had the honor of presenting, or attending the Boy Scouts Malcolm Prey Friend of Eagle Award. I had the honor of presenting to notable Greenwich citizen Peter Malkin for his support of the local Boy Scouts. We, all three attended the commencement ceremony for Greenwich High graduates. Nearly 700 young adults have completed their education here in town and move on to make their mark in the world. Another very exciting action is that on June 20th, we received another payment from the Junior League of Greenwich for their ongoing commitment to help raise the funds for the Byram Park Pool Project. I believe those funds are now in excess of seven figures, upwards of like $1,250,000 or maybe $1,003,000. And I think it's important to pause for a moment and think about that. That's a significant initiative on the part of private citizens to support something that's going to be a public benefit. I suspect very few communities have the benefit or pleasure of people like this coming forward, so we're very thankful and collectively express gratitude on behalf of the citizens here in Greenwich. On the 26th, I was invited to a program in Stanford for an organization called Girls with Impact. It is established by a Greenwich resident by the name of Jennifer Openshaw. The program brings together young women, girls, middle school to high school, and indoctrinates them into a mini MBA online program for teen entrepreneurs. Not only does it provide them the training to be an entrepreneur, but it harnesses their desire to make an impact in the area of human services. So each of the four that were recognized that day, three of which are from Greenwich High School, all had a human service component to their entrepreneurial endeavor. I was able to acknowledge their work, but also present certificates from Senator Blumenthal to the four of them for their initiative and success in completing the program. The goal is to incorporate this program regionally and give advantage to those perhaps who are not advantaged to be able to learn about becoming independent business leaders in the community. On Tuesday night, I was one of several residents who spoke at the Planning and Zoning Commission to voice concerns about the proposed development of retail and residential at the corner of East Putnam Avenue and Sheep Hill Road. The Riverside Association enumerated very clearly the issues that they have with this that relate to pedestrian safety, traffic volume and impact in terms of a Balkan aesthetic of the building. We all know that as selectmen, we get recurring concerns expressed about the exit-five interchange in corridor. This is essentially two blocks down from that, and some of the questions that I raise concern about is the timing of the traffic counts, if they were done over a 24-hour cycle or were they just done during the prescribed peak times. Our commission has left the item open, has not moved it to final, and so we're hopeful that, given all of the concerns, that an appropriate and amenable solution has arrived at. At this time of year, the town management is completing the annual managerial and confidential class employee evaluations. These are the employees that are not represented by a collective bargaining agreement. They are all of the town department heads, in many cases, the deputies. And I've completed 11 out of the 12, the 12 will be done today. Those all get rolled up into a report that goes to the BET. This year, the minimum increase is 1.5% for satisfactory performance and meeting objectives. If, in fact, those managers exceed, they get an additional half a percent. So the maximum 2% increase for those who truly lead the town in its administration and operations. I will say personally, I'm very satisfied, not only satisfied, thankful and pleased with the level of commitment, dedication, performance of all the departmental managers that report through the office of the first selectman. When you think about, one of the fundamental requirements is developing budgets that fund the services. This year, probably one of the most challenging, but one of the most successful in terms of containing the rate of increase in the mill rate. So I'm thankful again to all those. Yesterday, we had a meeting of the Youth Services Bureau led by Jenny Bixby. This is a requirement to hold several meetings a year in order to receive the grant from the state. Participating in this meeting were representatives from the Department of Human Services, the Greenwich Police Department, outside agencies, YW, Kids in Crisis, representative from the Board of Education, in the selectmen's office. So work that's taking place with the Bureau continues to focus on the Juvenile Justice Program, which is the Juvenile Review Board, the inter-agency team, which is collaboration of all various organizations that support children and youth within our community, the First Selectmen's Youth Commission, and then the referral and outreach that's done to different community groups, like the Junior League of Greenwich, Greenwich United Way Planning Council, and the Public School Readiness Council. So we're thankful that we've accomplished that. Finally, in terms of what's taken place, received notification that Greenwich has been named one of the safest cities to raise children. This is published by Safe Wise, and it identified nine of Connecticut's cities being among the safest places in the country to raise a child. The home security and safety brand ranked Greenwich the safest place in America. To make the rankings, Safe Wise compiled the most recent FBI crime data from 2015 to rank the cities. And this is also important, and I'm glad that Mr. Siciliano is here as Director of Parks. The company also considered parks in recreational opportunities, as well as special programs for kids and families. The Nutmeg State represented nearly one-third of the rankings' systems, thanks to what Safe Wise called, quote, "an exceptional rate of violent crime." So again, thanks to all those who provide the service on the front line, police, fire, EMS, and of course, the parks. Thank you. Finally, tonight, several of us are going to be participating in the Greenwich Sentinel Awards Ceremony, where the Reverend Jim Lemler, who's the pastor of Christ Church Greenwich, will be honored for his decade of service, not only to the Christ Church, but the community as well. For those who do not know Reverend Lemler, he has been quite impactful in our community in working across denominations to build understanding and partnership. He's undertaken several international trips to various locations to support humanitarian work and, again, to create greater understanding between the different faiths. So we wish Reverend Lember well, and I believe he's returning to, I was reading, somewhere in the Midwest. I want to say Indiana, but certainly wish him well, and I know that he said he's going to be popping back into Greenwich throughout his retirement. That concludes the updates. Another thing tonight, for those who may be interested, Princess Urfe, our Community Development Block Grant Administrator, is retiring or transferring, and there's going to be a gathering for those who wish to come and participate. They can see Barbara Johanne or Paula Belmont, but it's at the Gabriel's, and there's a fee people can pay to come. But we wish Princess well. She's done an outstanding job for us, and we're going to miss her. We have nothing under old business. One quick thing, it was reported, the other meeting that took place this week, and Mr. Brady, you're helping me remember because you were there. The first meeting of the Selectmen's Charter Revision Committee was held, and so they've, one thing that they've done is they've decided to identify themselves, because I said, you know, this is going to be confusing, looking into the future when people go to understand which committee was which. So they refer to themselves as the 66, 67 Charter. Maybe you could...
It's the Board of Selectmen's Board of Education Sections 66 and 67 Charter Revision Committee.
Okay, so that's the, that's the name that they're going by.
People are going to think, how did this thing last? It takes 50 years to do that. That's not right.
So they're basically asking some questions of legal, which speak to the charge. So anyway, I believe they elected Barry Rickert as the chairman and Brian Paldunis as the secretary.
Correct, and the next meeting will be held at 7:00 PM July 20th in the Mazza Room.
So that was one other last thing. Thank you. So item number, item number four, there's no old business. Under new business, it's that time of year where we begin to see various carnivals and festivities take place. There are two in town. Today, we have a request for a road closure for the St. Rocks Feast. This is something the board has granted each year, and we have in the materials the map delineating the road closure for St. Rocks Avenue and limited road closure for Hamilton Avenue at St. Rocks and Stone. So...
Was it last year with the rain? Remember that? Was it last year? Remember that?
Yes, joining us today is Jackie Budkins, who is on the St. Rocks Feast Committee, and if we have any questions?
Any questions?
Does anyone?
No.
This event will be taking place from August 9th through the 12th, from 6:00 PM to 11:00 PM, and the request is for the road closures at Alexander in St. Rock and St. Rock and Hamilton Avenue.
Go get your pizza, free.
Is there a motion to approve? Is there a motion to approve the request as presented?
Second.
With that objection.
What's being raffled off?
I'm sorry?
What's being raffled?
$30,000 in American Express gift cards. First prize, and then the other prize is $5,000, $4,000, $1,000.
You say not a car?
Not a car this year, no. We're doing American Express gift cards in an amount of $30,000. That's right. Do you want to buy a couple tickets?
So $25 is the tickets for the raffle, which is, as Ms. Budkin says, cash prize, American Express gift cards. Okay, the next item, you're welcome. Good luck. Hope the weather is cooperative for you.
Feel free to stack.
Speaking of weather, I just thought of another thing to tell you all. No, I mean, this is something, so just reservoir levels. As of last Friday, reservoir levels in Greenwich were at 94%, according to the Aquarian Company. That is precisely the same level they were at last year at this time. The point in sharing that is, people are questioning me as to why we still have a restriction on outdoor irrigation. That's the reason why we have the restriction on outdoor irrigation, is the volume of usage increases exponentially when the hot weather emerges. And so we don't want to be in the situation we were last year, so the two-day watering is something that Aquarian, and I emphasize Aquarian, with the support of the member communities, believes is a right schedule. Also, there's been information provided by the University of Connecticut's Agricultural Department and turf that supports that two-day watering is adequate to maintain turf. So just wanted to point that out, 94% as of Friday. Item number two on the agenda is request for municipal improvement for a new marina restroom at Greenwich Point. Greenwich Point is currently served by five separate restroom facilities. The Old Barn, which I believe now is the Sue Baker Pavilion, South Concession, Chimes Building, I don't know number six, but there's number six, but we're that in Clambake area. This particular request focuses on the Chimes Building restroom. This restroom is located on the western side of the point, and due to its location, is utilized by a wide variety of groups: marina, yacht club, sailing class, and outdoor events at the cow barn. The existing restrooms within the Chime Building are limited in capacity and not ADA compliant. The building and its septic field sits well below flood elevation and cannot be altered because of the FEMA regulations. The project will create a new standalone marina restroom building located above the FEMA flood elevation on the bluff opposite the marina. The new building will be a masonry structure with a slab on grade totaling 1,386 square feet. It will be fully compliant to meet the American with Disabilities Act and have an office for the Greenwich Point Dockmaster, which will provide clear view of the docks. A new septic system size for the building will be included, and upon completion, the existing restrooms in the Chime Building will have restricted use. Joining us today is not only the Director of Parks and Recreation, Mr. Siciliano, but Alan Manelli, who is the Superintendent of Building Construction and Maintenance. Alan, as you come forward, again, recognizing that this is not the first restroom you've done, but it is a restroom in a very sensitive treasured park. And I guess one of the questions that I initially have, as you get into this, is how was the location to situate this determined?
Well, first of all, number six was, is the newest restroom, and it's located further out on the point by the Assistant Caretaker's Cottage. And we've been slowly upgrading all the restroom facilities on the point. The Old Barn was done last year. We had done some work at the South Concession. Number six is done, and this is the next one. The Chimes Building sits at sea elevation. I mean, when you go by that building, the sand is right across from you, and any kind of an abnormal high tide floods the basement of that wood structure. And again, building or remodeling that building to meet a public demand would be futile because we just couldn't maintain it. As I said, the septic system is below elevation, is below the sea elevation, so that constantly floods, and we always are having an issue with odors and just keeping the place clean. And identifying anything along our seashore or on our coastline and putting a new building has to take in count the FEMA flood elevation. Anybody that's been down at the Grass Island Marina lately is noticing the new locker building that's going in. That building is actually, from the parking lot to the first floor elevation, is close to six feet above the parking lot. is close to six feet above the parking lot. We didn't want to put any kind of an, we wanted a building to sort of blend in. So in choosing this location, we were looking for topography that on the ground would be above the FEMA elevation, and that's why this location was picked. The bluff at this point is above the FEMA flood elevation by one foot. So the building could be dropped in and not have to do anything about raising it, which would incorporate any kind of ramping or other accessing, accessible methods of getting into the building. It'll be right off the parking lot.
But in terms of looking at the map, the very schematic... Looking at that area, trying to visualize it visually personally, isn't it on a higher elevation? And I get why we want it at an elevated elevation, but then in terms of VDA accessibility, is that a challenge?
Sorry?
Well, number one, there is a roadway that goes up, that goes up to a parking lot in the Cow Barn. So, and you have a road in and a road out. We can look at, and again, this is to get the plans moving into planning and zoning, we could look at putting some type of ramping system from the lower roadway up to the building. It'll be, probably involve several switchback ramps, but it could be done. But we're not going to be able to build anything down in the FEMA flood elevation. It is the VE zone. Even the pool building, the pool project is above the VE zone.
What was the thinking in not just incorporating the restroom in the existing Chimes Building as part of the renovation? Rather than, so then you're not building another structure? I mean, I get it's about elevate, is it because of just the elevation?
It's because of main, investing town dollars in a building that sits in a flood elevation. I mean, if we had Sandy, in Sandy, the Chimes Building took a lot of damage. The side of the building actually came off, and we had to put it back together. If there was a restroom, if the restroom was expanded with proper interiors, we would have lost the whole thing in Sandy. So how do you invest $600,000 in a building that's in a flood elevation?
Well, the reason why I ask is I think you're familiar with the next project that the Greenwich Point Conservancy is going to undertake is a restoration of that facility. And perhaps, Joe, you can speak to this, just to what you know, but that is what has been indicated.
We know, and this has been accounted for. What we want to do is remove the town, we want to remove the function of the restroom from the Chimes Building to allow Greenwich, the Conservancy to move in and do what they want to do to that building without having to worry about a town function. Because even though they, if they renovate that building and we have it, with the bathrooms in it, it's going to be very, very hard to maintain it. So it actually has a basement, that Chimes Building has a basement in it, and a wooden floor. You don't really put public restrooms on a wooden floor. Especially in a beach area.
No, I understand. I'm just, I'm just trying to think in terms of resources. I mean, again, we're adding another building.
This will allow, this will allow the Conservancy to properly restore the Chimes Building historically without having to account for a public restroom into the building.
So for accessibility reasons, if the, if the ramp were to accompany this, will you get objections from, from an aesthetic point of view or no?
We always get objections from aesthetic point of view. We have to go through...
What's the alternative then, though? How do you, well, I'm just having a hard time understanding if ADA compliant, but it's not accessible. Does that make sense?
Well, there's, there's... Alan's here with me now. There's ADA compliant. I mean, we have bathrooms. You have to make the bathrooms compliant. You have to be able to get into a stall. You have to be able to get into the door, which you can't do at the Chimes Building currently.
Yeah, but how do you access, I mean...
So what we do is we build new bathrooms. We make sure the doorways are proper width. There's proper turning radiuses for the wheelchairs, that there's stalls inside that the wheelchair can access into the building, I mean, inside to a stall. Make sure there's proper heights on the toilets. There's grab bars. There's all kinds of stuff that's in a facility that makes it ADA compliant. Then you have the, then you have the accessibility issue from the ground into the building. Now, at the, the new Grass Island Locker Building, there's a 65-foot-long ramp that goes from the ground up into the building. That was a whole separate part of the design. What we're doing here by placing the building onto the bluff, we're incorporating the current roadway system, which roadways are not subject to the ADA rules, but there's a parking lot. So people that get up to that parking lot will be able to access this building by rolling right into the building. It'll be on the same elevation, no ramps. If you don't drive, that's why we're to try to put in another ramp that comes off the lower road, like a wooden ramp that could be, if it, you'd have to, we'd have to do something. We understand that. And we understand that.
So we can keep the dialogue, your questions, if you want to come up and ask them, I'm welcome. Alan's on my first, I'm sorry.
Alan? Yes, so he's representing that point of view. We did receive, and I want to acknowledge correspondence from Mr. Robert Brady, who addressed this to the Board of Selectmen regarding this particular MI request. It's dated June 26th. And on the second page, Mr. Brady enumerates several points that I think are very worthy of consideration. So I'm going to read them, because he's, his point is these are not addressed in the proposal that's before us. One is the land that would be cleared of trees and vegetation for the new building. Two is where or how the new septic system would be sited, or whether it would be gravity or pumped. Three, how the proposition that's proposed will, in fact, improve Greenwich for its residents. That may, you may have touched on that. While the proposal indicates the new building would provide space for the Greenwich Point Dockmaster's Office, no space appears to be included on the sketch. And then we alluded to it, but we, we don't have a firm answer today. What is to be done with the existing Chimes Building facilities? And we know they're going to be renovated, but what is the intended use by GPC in the town once it's done? So I'm, I'm not trying to put you on the spot today.
No, I could answer a lot of those questions. When a building is renovated, you have to have a use laid out for that building to undertake the renovation to meet the building code. So by removing functions, it allows Greenwich Point Conservancy to renovate the building historically without worrying about restrooms. So if they want to make the space for the sailing school and have a small bathroom there, they can, they could then adjust their plans at a much cheaper cost to do that, because the, the public restrooms have been removed. The septic system is going to go into the boat, into the boatyard. The area has been perked already. There is a room on the drawings for the Dockmaster's Office adjacent to the restrooms. And what was the, there was one more question? The location, the location?
The clearing of trees and vegetation.
Again, we have to, this MI goes forward, and the whole package with the site plans and the buildings go to planning and zoning. The zoning, planning and zoning will then refer me to the ARC for aesthetics. Even the package we have completed today, we did not even try to put a building exterior, show the finish of the exterior, because the ARC has their own ideas, and we try to incorporate those ideas. So a lot of the stuff for the MI is to acknowledge the fact that we, we, we think we need, or we're saying we need with Joe, that we need a more permanent restroom that could service that end of the park, and build it so that we know that it's in a secure location, meeting all the codes.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not going to debate you. I think there's a need for the restroom.
Right, but that's what this is about. And then all the other points are addressed in the planning and zoning process. I mean, the drawings are done. They're detailed. If, you know, things like the handicap, a ramp, another ramp would have to be engineered because we can't build a permanent structure into the VE zone. So we have to be able to construct things that are removable, so.
Understood. I think, as I indicated when we opened, that we're receiving this the first time today. It gives it a public airing.
Right.
Some very salient points have been expressed, and that I'd like us to be able to address those or have that in written response, so that when we consider for referral, we will have done so, knowing that these concerns have been addressed and understand fully what's to come. I would somehow equate it to the process we followed with New Lebanon. It took us that several times, how many, four, three? And in the end, despite our due diligence, people had further questions as the project unfolded. I often think it's best to try to get them at the front end.
And no issue. We've done this with the fire station. We've done it with the pool.
Yeah, so that's all. Not trying to be difficult.
No, no, I'm just like, I'm just trying to answer all the questions I can now.
So I, at this point, I, I expect that I'm going to want to see this between now and the next meeting, much of what you said, but in writing. And then I would like to talk with Katie, who I have a meeting with later today, but...
And she probably doesn't even know it's coming.
Well, she'll know now.
I mean, she hasn't seen the plans. That's what I mean.
I guess location is...
Yes, the only place that we could find that's accessible to people. I mean, it's, we wanted to make sure that it was close enough to the Cow Barn, that it was close enough to the Yacht Club, to the Marina, all the people that were using it. And we had to find a location that was above the FEMA elevation, and this seemed to be the perfect location. If you move further east towards, back towards the entrance of the Point, the land area gets smaller, and it's more steep.
This is going to be a very inane comment, but I have to make it, just because I've been thinking about this. In terms of bathrooms, we know that we have a number of public events of varying size and a varying costs associated with them. And some of the higher volume extensive events bring in some fairly elaborate portable lavatories. I'm just curious, has there been any thought given for some of our parks, playfields, to look at contracting to bring in more high-quality lavatory facilities rather than just sort of the, the green box that sits unattractively on the side? Because I've just been, I've been asked this question recently, having now gotten into the youth sports with my son, and we go to different travel locations. We were in Portchester last night in Lion Park. We were in Purchase. And people, and I say, well, you know, one thing about Greenwich, we have far more parks in some of these communities, so there's a resource allocation. And we also then have the school, elementary school facilities, which we play on some of them. And so Greenwich has far more elementary schools than some of these. So again, to me, it's about resources and devoting those resources. But to, to address the issue of lavatories and the quality of them, have we, have we thought, or could we investigate that if we haven't, of looking at perhaps seasonal, higher-quality, mobile lavatories? That's really for Joe, but just...
I mean, we have an extensive portajon program right now with a lot of parks and fields, mostly, mostly at the fields, but they're not restroom facilities. Some of the major parks, Binnie, Two...
So we have an extensive portajon program at most of the fields. Binnie Bruce, Byron Park, you know, the, of Pioneer, now, all the major parks have, you know, permanent restroom facilities. Some of them have multiple facilities in each park. But, you know, in order to address the need of, you know, a baseball game back here at the back of Haven Meyer, or at an elementary school or middle school, we've placed seasonal restroom, portable restroom facilities. I mean, they're their standard, you know, single-type facility. They're not overly attractive, but some of the companies have, some that are better-looking than others, different colors, et cetera. But, you know, we haven't looked at going into, you know, some of those more like the executive portable toilets that you see at some of the special events that we have. We have not, there's, you know, the up-charge of purchasing those are quite extent, you know, quite expensive. And then, of course, there's the, you know, the charge of maintaining, maintaining them or storing them off-season. I don't know of a lot of companies that have a large inventory of those in stock for summer rentals either. I mean, they have a few for these types of large-scale events. But even, even a thing like the Greenwich Town Party has some of those, you know, executive types of restrooms, and then they have a bank of 50 portable facilities on the property also. So it just seems that when we've, over the years, when things have gotten done or rebuilt fields or buildings that are adjacent to fields, there's never really been a consideration for an attached for exterior facility. We are looking at that when we do the Eastern Greenwich Civic Center, to try to get a combination of interior, exterior restroom facilities because of the extensive use at that location. And it's also a building that we manage. I mean, there is a structure there to do this with. So we'll take that, I mean, we take that under advisement every single time. We look at a town building that we're going to upgrade, but we've, we've been strictly renting portable, portable restrooms.
Thank you.
Are portable restrooms handicap accessible?
We, we do, in, in most locations, where required, we have handicap. They do make two types, a regular rest, a portable restroom and a handicap facility. We do, we do have those on locations. Sometimes you see one of each unit. There'll be a portable restroom, and then next to it will be a handicap accessible. There is one at the Chimes, you're correct. Right.
There's also one at the Clambake area.
Correct.
Where there's no accessibility and no bathroom either.
Yeah. So we have them here and there. I mean, there's, we have a demand for it, and we want to, you know, we want to make sure that there's a restroom provided for folks that need that type of restroom. But we have placed them in places where we know that the modification of the Chimes Building, you know, or there isn't, there isn't a way to do that right at this moment. The Clambake Building also, there, there isn't a way to do that. So we've placed a unit, an individual unit adjacent to the building.
I have no questions, but you, sure, if you, if you don't mind.
Since you were talking about upgrading the Chimes Building and then get upgraded, is there a plan to redo the other bathroom at the Clambake area also? Is there a plan to put a new structure or to modify the structure in place so that...
That building is also below the FEMA flood elevation, and because it's in the plane, there's no place to lift it. So either we lift it like we're doing the one at Grass Island, or we exclusively go to some kind of a portable unit.
That's, but that's a bathroom that really gets a lot of usage, especially when you're running an event.
Well, with an event, you could plan for the event. One of the issues we have is that people walk the Greenwich Point all the time, and the bathrooms are sort of scattered around Chime. Right now, the Clambake is, Clambake is open for people to use it. But just like this building, if, if something happens during a storm, we're out. Now, the Number Six that was done four years ago is above the flood elevation. So we've been securing the ones at Greenwich Point as, as well as all around town. We've been in a program of redoing our restrooms. This one that we're proposing today for the MI is one of the, one of the last ones to be done without running the possibility like a Clambake, where we know we can't do a renovation, we would actually lose the building. Because there's just no place to put it and meet the code unless we put it on stilts. It would probably be close to seven feet.
Alan, just, I'm sorry, just to be clear for clarification, that what you're proposing now, it's going to require, is, are you suggesting requiring, or you're making this that it's, we're going to have to make our MI approval contingent, I know we can't, on a ramp? Is that what you're saying?
No, you would, that would be picked up as a comment from the Board of Selectmen that, I'm not even guaranteeing I could put a ramp in.
Well, that, well, that's, that's...
I mean, there's, there's regulations, right, but we would try. Just like everything else that you guys asked me to do, we try to accommodate everything.
What I'm saying to you, me to vote in favor of something, it has to sort of be, how are people going to, you know, how is someone going to get in it?
It's like you said, the place is built with pedestrians. People walk through the...
How do you get in? That's, I know it's ADA compliant, once you're in it, but how do you get in it?
I think maybe one of the things to do is go out and, for you guys, go out and look at the site.
It's a good idea.
Yeah, all right. Maybe we could schedule the July 13th meeting at the Point.
Maybe we could schedule the July 13 meeting at the point. Do you have accommodations at the, at the?
The restrooms at the Chimes?
We can have it in, we can have it in the restroom.
Who can make accommodations at the yacht?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, we did that, we did that with New Lab, I mean, I do think it's a good idea, because again, if the question's not asked here, it'll be asked at the next phase, and I think it's always best to try to front-load, get everything out there and addressed, plus for us to make a judgment. So our next meeting's July 13th. We can discuss that, or an intervening date where we just go out and do a site visit with you on that field trip.
We meet morning at 7:30.
Okay. So we could, let's, you're not objecting to that.
Me too. Okay?
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. And for the record, Mr. Brady, your document will be part of the minutes.
I would add one.
Sure.
State your name, Mr. Brady.
The one thing I would add, in, in writing that letter, I did speak to Joe Dowling, and he alerted me and to Alan, that you have a committee to deal with disabilities, and I'm sure what the name of it is, but it would seem that wherever you've got a prop, proposal such as this, it would be something to refer to that group and get their comments on it, so that you're, actually, your, your endorsement as you forward this on to, refer this on to planning and zoning for MI, you'd have the, that thinking in it as well.
Great, no, thank you.
I stumbled on this, it's not, so I think you've got a more systemic, a more systematic process would do well. Thank you.
Thank you. And so Alan, if you could, you're, you're one of the.
I think I can do the 13.
We might do a site before, but in terms of the committee, Lolly and Paul, we usually are meeting quarterly. I have to look more.
You go over here the last week after the summer discussion, twice a quarter?
Okay, once a quarter.
If we're getting, getting the meeting track.
Yeah.
So I think after the summer, that's when we'll follow that up.
In the intervening period, perhaps we send this, we send this item, the information to them electronically, and then when we schedule a site visit, invite them to come, because then they could take, as Mr. Brady said, take into consideration what it is and give the feedback by the 13th. Okay? I appreciate that.
Thank you, Bob.
Thanks. That concludes new business. Under appointments and nominations, I made a plea at the last meeting, and I'm going to do so again, and I'm looking at Mr. Brady, and maybe I could twist his arm to do this. We're looking for representatives to the Area 9 Cable Council. Each of the communities within the area are accorded a set number of representatives. The Cable Council, in overly simplistic terms, I'm not having the charge right in front of me, allocates resources that are, that are derived from fees that we all pay on our cable and subscriber bills, and it goes into a fund, and it supports public access television, which is what we have here, running and taking into consideration this public meeting. So we need, I believe, two positions, at a minimum, two positions are open, so I would make a plea, I believe it's a direct appointment that I am asked to make, I believe it meets eight times a year, and I want to say they've been meeting up in Norwalk, but I can, and you are, you're our person, really.
And I've been asking around, too.
So, Mr. Brady? I won't put you on the spot, but I'm putting you on the spot. You can tell us later.
I will be with you, sir.
So that's, that's something that is important. We had, had, we have had RTM representation, we also try to have someone from the Board of Ed.
Yep, we still have, yep.
And we've at times, I think, had a staff person from the town, but it's, it's varied. So again, I just want to make that plea.
In the meantime, I'll start going to the meeting, how's that?
Well, you can.
I'll start going to, at least there's someone there until we.
Yeah.
All right.
Are there any other appointments, nominations today?
Bob, thank you. Three zero.
None at this time, because I don't think you gentlemen have seen many of these people.
Who? But I know, I know two of them.
Well, there, there's somebody up for Shellfish, she's very, very good.
Yeah.
There are four people up for Parks and Rec for one spot, and they're all excellent people. There's one P&amp;Z, which is a very important apartment, and Historic Development, I guess there's an opening there.
I'm okay with the Shellfish, and then the.
I'm sorry?
Shellfish, we're good. If you want to move forward.
Okay, then we'll do that. Nominate for consideration for the Shellfish Commission, Devon Shelby, for a term expiring 318, so she would only be in effect for a number of months that are there. She could come back. She's, she's a young lady, she's a graduate of the University of Tampa, she is teaching at the Stanford Nature Center, she's also working with students at Norwalk High School on a project, I forget exactly what it was. She's doing something that I think is very interesting, get involved with counting horseshoe crabs. So I highly recommend her.
So you've moved, motion is made to appoint, because it's the board appointment.
Mm-hmm.
Shelby?
Devon Shelby.
Devon Shelby, for a term expiring 33118, filling, filling a vacated term.
All right, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anything else?
No, not today.
Okay.
And I do have an item that we could add.
Oh, sure.
Consideration of the proposed meeting dates for 2018 for the Board of Selectmen.
All right, so we really, I jumped ahead to six. Going back to new business, just for discussion, not for action, but just to introduce it, we have a motion to take up discussion of the 2018 meeting calendar schedule, and the reason we do this is we have to be able to lock in the rooms for the board now for next year, because they get scheduled rapidly. So one, we need a motion just to take it up for discussion and distribution.
The motion of yes, consideration of the 2018 schedule, 2017.
So it's been moved in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
So this should really say draft, but it's following the prescribed two meetings a month versus the one meeting required by charter, and.
Thank you.
There's another one. There, there is a reservation of the room, I believe that's the second Thursday and the fourth Thursday, is that right, Barbara?
Correct.
Second, fourth, for 10 a.m. Now, we often talk about this, there's always the ability to establish a special meeting and to have it at another location. There are different requirements under FOI in terms of posting and so forth, time period, but this is to secure this room for these dates. Aside from just doing that, I think we can take it up at the next meeting, after people look at it.
I'm fine with it.
I'm fine with it.
I'd rather wait until the next meeting, just.
Okay.
Yeah, no, just.
I don't know what I'm doing next month, rather.
Sure. Yeah, it's fine, yeah. So that concludes appointments, nominations, adding that to new business. So pending litigation, I believe we have an update on one item, or two items from legal, and we need.
Amina.
Amina Ahmad, I believe.
Yes.
So is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Okay, 11:08.